Regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'm going to ask interim city attorney, Robert Kim, to do the invocation, and I'll ask interim city manager Von Norris to do the pledge of allegiance.
We all bow our heads. Lord, thank you for this gathering, and thank you for blessing us for making the rightful decisions that we're about to make, and for serving the good citizens of City of Hawthorne. I'm sure that we will be inspired by your spirit and do our best in our judgments. Amen.
Everyone can please stand, face a flag, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, benevolent, justiciable, for all.
Thank you. All right, thank you, folks. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English? Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Here.
And Mayor Vargas?
Here.
All are present except for Councilmember Reyes English.
Councilmember Reyes English's absence is excused.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine has a presentation on the agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I have invited representatives from ICRMA to discuss the 2122 budget and also the liability premium, because there is going to be an increase in it, and I wanted to make certain that the public was aware of the reasons for the increase. So I invited the representatives. So I understand Ms. Adrienne Beatty, the executive director, is here, and Mr. John Nielsen is also here. So Ms. Beatty, would you go ahead and begin, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Let me start sharing my screen. Okay, do you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. How much time do I have?
Ten minutes, ma'am. There's a ten-minute limit.
I think I'm going to ask if we could extend it for about five more minutes, because this is going to be an extensive presentation. Could we have an extra five minutes on that?
Yeah. Does everybody concur?
Yes, I'll give a two-minute warning at thirteen minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll try to go through this quickly for you. But as Mayor Valentine said, there is quite a bit of information. So I'm going to give you some background first. ICRMA was initially designed for liability coverage. Most of the members, all members of the organization, have to purchase liability coverage. Any additional coverage is at their discretion. So these four coverages that you see in the blue boxes are our pooled coverages. So I don't know how familiar the council is with risk pooling or joint powers authorities, but these four coverages are ones where the members of those pools pool their money together and self-fund. So you can design what coverage you have, and as long as we collect enough money to pay for those losses, then you can cover essentially what you want to cover. You're not beholden to whatever the commercial market is willing to cover. Those coverages on the bottom in the little white arrows are pure commercial purchased policies. So those are just where we use our economies of scale to purchase policies with no risk-sharing layer for those coverages. This is the structure of these programs. The City of Hawthorne does not participate in all of ICRMA's available programs. You can see that workers' compensation and earth movement and flood are grayed out because you do not participate in those. These are the structures of the programs, starting July 1, 2021. We have $35 million in limits for liability. The members have a retained limit, or a deductible, if you will, of anywhere from $250,000 up to $8 million. We pool risk from the members' retained limit up to $2 million. And you can see on the property and auto physical damage programs, those have not changed from the prior year. There's a $10,000 deductible. You have $250 million in property limits, $10 million in auto physical damage limits, so all of your vehicles, $10 million in limits for crime or employee fidelity, employee dishonesty. You have a $10 million limit for terrorism coverage, and you have a $5 million limit for cyber liability coverage. So we had some very significant challenges to the renewal this year. And what you see on this slide here are some of the major reasons why this renewal was so challenging and why we were talking to the ICRMA board, starting back a year ago this time, even before then, that it was potentially going to be one of the worst renewals that ICRMA has ever had, and that bore out to be true. The market has hardened significantly, which means the capacity is shrinking. There are less insurers in the market that want to take on the risk. They want to charge more money, and they want to decrease the limits of coverage they will give. Risk pools, joint powers authorities, were formed back in the mid-'80s, the late-'70s and the mid-'80s because of exactly this kind of situation happening. And we have not seen a market as hard as we are seeing today since that happened, since risk pools were actually created, because there were insurers that just left the marketplace entirely. They would not quote municipal entities, and cities and school districts and other entities were left holding the bag, trying to figure out how they were going to cover these kinds of losses. There's been significant reduction in available insurers. In fact, you'll see when we get to the liability tower, one of our incumbent insurers has left the marketplace completely. They are no longer willing to write coverage for municipal entities in California, Washington, or Oregon. The insurers that are still in the market and willing to write the business have shrunk their capacity significantly, so they're not willing to provide as broad of limits as they've provided, and they're charging a lot more money for a lot less limit. You've all seen there's been a severe political police liability scrutiny that's happened over the past year. Insurers don't like police liability risk. They've never liked it, and they like it even less now. So we'll talk a little bit later about some of the things that we're doing to try to make ICRMA more attractive to reinsurers going forward, and maybe try to stem some of the bleeding of this with next year's renewal. Adding into the police liability issue is the social inflation issue. It's really risky to try to take a police liability claim to a jury trial right now. There's a lot of loss of trust in police departments nationally and in California as well. So it makes it harder to settle those claims, and those claims are much more expensive to settle. And the California litigation environment. California's always been an outlier in the litigation environment, and it's just amplified now with everything else that is going on. There are a couple of things that make California a significantly worse litigation environment than other states. One is that there are no tort caps, so basically, anyone can sue for any amount of money that they want. A judge cannot come in and say, "The maximum that the jury can award is X dollars." If the jury awards it, then you owe it. You have to pay it. The other thing is joint and several liabilities. So in the western states, California, Washington, and Oregon, if there are multiple entities that are at fault or found to be at fault for a bodily injury or a property damage, but let's say the City of Hawthorne is found to be 1% at fault for a loss, and the entity that is 99% at fault doesn't have the money to pay, then Hawthorne is going to be seen as the deep pocket and is going to be responsible for paying 100% of that loss. So all of those things make insurers very, very nervous about taking any kind of significant risk with municipal entities in the state without charging a whole lot of money for it. So just to give this a bigger picture, in terms of, that was a lot of really big doom and gloom, and it was a really terrible renewal, not just for Hawthorne, not just for ICRMA. I would challenge you to talk to any of your municipal colleagues in the state or in other states. It's terrible right now, and everyone is feeling the pinch right now. But bringing this into a bigger perspective, in terms of ICRMA's overall renewal of all of its programs, this chart is showing you what the estimates were back in February that we gave to the board of, you know, this is what we think could be a worst-case scenario for all of these renewals, and then here's how these renewals actually came in. So most of these renewals actually came in better than expected, and we had significantly better renewals in some programs than most other pools in the state. Many other pools had severe, severe increases in cost and limits of coverage for property, auto physical damage, and earth movement and flood. We did not see that. We had a very favorable renewal in those programs. The ones that hit us the worst were cyber liability and liability, general liability. With regard to the cyber liability, it's only 0.6 of the overall budget. It's less than 1% of the total budget, less than 1% of your total premium. So while we did have 159% increase in the cost of the coverage, that, in the grand scheme of things, is a pretty insignificant hit to the budget as a whole. Liability, not so much. Liability is 78% of our total budget, so even a 10% change in overall cost for liability has a significant impact on what our members will pay for that coverage. So when I get into the budget pages, I don't know how big you guys are seeing it on your screen. It might be pretty small. I can zoom in on places if that would be helpful for you. This is just giving you an overview of the entire ICRMA budget as it was approved at the June 10 meeting. So you can see for City of Hawthorne, it shows your participation in the liability program, property program, the auto physical damage program, crime program, cyber, and terrorism. And it shows that you have a 55% increase in your overall budget to the tune of about $856,000. So I'm going to go into some detail on the programs themselves. I'm going to save liability for the last, because, not because it's the best, it's the worst, and you will have the most questions on that, so I'm going to save that one for the last. So again, going into your property coverage, you have $250 million of limits. You have a $10,000 deductible. This is for all of your buildings, vandalism, fire, any kind of damage to your buildings and your contents. This is the budget page for the property program. So we use your total insured values that you report to us annually, any changes in the value of your properties, any buildings you've added or taken off of your schedule, and we multiply that by a rate to generate what your premium is for the pooling layer. And then we add on premium for the excess pieces that sit on top of the pooling layer. So Hawthorne's contribution increased by 6%, but as you can see here, that equates to about $4,000 is your increase in premium for coverage for all of your properties. You only had a very minimal increase in your total insured values of about half a percent. That's largely related to the fact that all of your properties were appraised in 2018. So really, the changes in your property value should be really minimal year over year, unless you buy a new property or rebuild a structure or something of that nature. The auto physical damage program, again, is a $10 million limit and a $10,000 deductible, so that's any damage to your vehicles, whether they're parked in the courtyard or they are out and about driving around. We actually had a very favorable renewal for this program this year. This was an aggregate $10 million limit last year. That aggregate is now gone, so there is no limit on how many times you can have one occurrence that hits, that goes up to a $10 million total loss. Now, obviously, with vehicles, that would be pretty difficult to have a $10 million loss on a vehicle, but you could have multiple vehicles, fire trucks, police vehicles, higher-value vehicles that could all be involved in one incident that could get closer to that number. This is the APD budget. Again, all of our budget pages are broken down the same way. There, it shows that the deductible is, it says, whatever is the exposure base that we use to generate your cost, and so that's your total insured values, all the vehicles. So Hawthorne owns $10 million worth of vehicles. And then we multiply that by a rate to get the funding for the pooled layer, and then we add on whatever the commercial insurer says we need to charge for the coverage from the pooled layer up to $10 million. We add on other expenses, and we get to the total amount. So Hawthorne's contribution for auto coverage this year increased by 9.5%. You had a 5.5% increase in your total insured values for your vehicles. And again, this represents only about 1% of the overall budget. Your crime program, again, this is a very, very small amount of the total budget. It's 0.1% of the total budget. Your contribution, however, actually decreased by 20%, and that's because your premium is based on your number of employees. So unfortunately, your premium went down, but not for a great reason. It went down because you lost employees. You had 409 employees last year, and you now have 305 employees. Or at the time when we collected this data, you had 305 employees. So while that generated a cost savings for you, it does mean that you have lost staff, which is unfortunate.
You have two minutes?
I'm going to skip over terrorism and cyber, because as I said, cyber is, you know, it's a very small percent of the budget. It's half a percent of the budget, so even though it was a really bad renewal, it's not what's costing you the most money. What is costing you the most money is the liability program. So we had major, major changes in the liability program this year. We had major shifting in our reinsurers. This layer right here, this $2 to $4 million, increased in cost by 169%. This layer, the safety national layer, increased in cost by 45%. And this carrier was not willing, they used to attach down at $3 million. They were not willing to attach that low because they do not like our losses, and they don't want to take on that much of our risk. This layer has been the most problematic, this $9 million to $20. It used to be $8 million to $12 million. And we, one of the, I mentioned earlier that a carrier has decided they no longer will write municipal risk in California, Washington, and Oregon. That was the carrier that was filling in this TBD spot over here. So we had this carrier, Old Republic, was taking on 58% of this layer. They are no longer willing to take on that risk because they do not like our losses, and they have transitioned over to the 42%, and we are still, literally as I speak, trying to find another carrier that is willing to take on the other 58% of this layer. So that's incredibly problematic for us right now, and what's driving a lot of this cost. Skip over the details of the budget and just talk about some of the cost-saving measures that we're trying to put in place and have had in place to affect some of this. No members are allowed to use defense attorneys that are not on our defense panel, and we have a maximum bill rate that those defense attorneys can charge. We have a service called Bottom Line Legal X that does a bill review of every legal bill that comes in and kicks it back and will not allow it to be paid if the bill rate is over the approved rate or if they're charging for the kinds of work that we are not allowed to be paid for by the policy. We also initiated this year a law enforcement risk control plan to take a deeper dive into law enforcement risk and see if we can provide some of our, provide our members with more tools to make adjustments to policy or procedure that could be improved in order to reduce some of the risk that is being brought by these claims. And we also, at the June 10 meeting, the board voted to approve funding mental health services for officers, for all of our members that have police departments. We were able to negotiate a really discounted rate to allow for the short-term counseling for not just officers in the field, but all of the police department employees. Obviously, protecting the mental health of our officers is going to be critical to making sure that they feel safe and can make sound decisions in the field that lead to good actions and don't lead to further litigation. So I will-
Yeah, we've arrived to our time limit. If you want to summarize.
Yep, there we go.
I will open it up to questions. I'm willing to go back to any slides if you want to deep dive into anything, but I open it up to the council to ask any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any questions from any of my colleagues?
I do have a question. I do, thank you, thank you so much. That was a really excellent summary of a very complicated program, Ms. Beatty. Could you please go back to the slide you had on layers of reinsurance? I wanted to make sure the public understands what all of that means. Could you just explain those layers, what that means?
Yes. So every member of ICRMA picks a retained limit, or what this says is member retention, and that means for every loss, they, the city pays this amount of money out of pocket before any pooled layer or insurance coverage kicks in. So for Hawthorne, you have selected a $500,000 retention. So for every single loss, Hawthorne pays the first $500,000 of any defense costs or other fees or settlement costs. Once it exceeds $500,000, we collect money. We have an actuary identify every year how much money we need to collect to fund this pool retained layer, which goes from the members' retained limit up to a maximum of $2 million. So that is the layer that is accessible. That is the layer that if we don't collect enough money in it, we could go back and ask the members, we would have to go back and ask the members to contribute more money because we own those losses forever. Of course, self-funding all the way up to $35 million would be incredibly cost prohibitive, so we don't do that. We add on layers of commercial insurance purchase coverage above that. ICRMA offers at present up to $35 million of limits. I believe two years ago, it had gotten up to $40 million of limits, and then we were not able to get that high of limit before. So we do not have carriers that are willing to go from $2 million all the way up to 35, so that's why you have this incredible breakdown of layers, and even this one layer here where there's not a single insurer that's willing to take on that risk. They, so it's split between two insurers, and we are still looking for the second insurer to fill that spot. That is how we get to this $35 million limit, is we go to dozens and dozens of insurers and give them all of our data and ask them if they are willing to insure our risk. And those that are, they say, "Yes, I'm willing to take this $5 million. I'm willing to take this $10 million." And then they charge a premium for our benefit of having them take that risk.
Any other questions?
Okay. Hey, I have my hands up.
You have it? Oh, I didn't see it. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Adrienne, can you explain how that you guys calculate or distribute the percentage of the increase? Because I know we have like 16 cities participating in the program. How do you determine how much each city is going to pay? It is based on our loss, or you determine a loss in a big group? How do you determine that? The 55%?
There are multiple ways. So first, let me go to the liability budget. So, well, it doesn't show, first, it's based on your retained limit. So the members that are retaining more of their own risk pay less money because they are pushing less losses to the pool, right? They're paying for those themselves. The second piece is the exposure base, which it doesn't show on this budget, but the exposure base for liability is your payroll. So we collect your payroll annually on a quarterly basis, and whatever your payroll is, your percentage of payroll in comparison to the total payroll of the program, if Hawthorne has 20% of the payroll of the entire program, then in a pure world, you would get 20% of the cost of whatever the cost is for the program. Then we layer on top of that your loss experience. So when I was talking earlier about Hawthorne having adverse loss experience, that gets layered on top of that to augment your contribution. We then, on the back end, have a capping mechanism that we put in place that is to try to limit the changes year over year so that there's less volatility. It's done at the rate level, not at the premium level, so you still can have a, you know, you see a 58% increase there, even with a capping mechanism in place that still translates to a higher-than-normal premium increase.
So, and you guys did, you know, you went out there looking for better deals, so you couldn't find companies that wanted to deal with California to decrease that 58%?
Yes. Unfortunately, that is what is happening right now, is we have, literally as we speak, we have brokers in the market trying to find an insurer that's willing to take on that 58% of risk. We obviously had an insurer that would take that on last year, and they have left the marketplace entirely, not just ICRMA, but everyone. They're no longer writing municipal business in the western states. So we are still hopeful that we're going to find somebody before July 1. We're in talks with two or three different insurers, but the level of scrutiny that municipalities are getting right now is unlike anything I've ever seen.
Even because of the 2020 COVID, you know, it was a lot of risk there?
No.
Your employees didn't work at, they didn't work at the office, they worked from home, and so how do they calculate that risk?
There, it's largely driven by police liability risk. So that didn't get decreased by COVID. Theoretically, it should have because there were less people out and about for large portions of the year. But then you add into it the social inflation factor and just politically what's been happening with police liability risk over the past year, and things that, claims that maybe would have been able to settle in the, you know, $1 to $2 million range are now settling in the $10 to $15 million range. We had exactly that situation, actually. We had a claim that was from 2016 that was a wrongful use of force where a person was killed, and the estimates were that that claim would settle between $4 and $6 million. And it went to settlement in June of 2020, and it settled for $12 million. So that's-
Yeah. Thank you for that. So just a last question. Now, you said that for Hawthorne is going to be $856,000, right? So on top of what we paid last year?
Last year, yes, yes. $856,000 on top of what you paid last year for all of your coverages, yes. Last year, yes, yes. $856,000 on top of what you paid last year for all of your coverages, yes.
All right, so thank you very much, appreciate you.
Anybody have a, else have a question? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I quick ask a question for Felice, if Felice is on board?
Is this related to this item?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Vaughn, hi Felice. Did you. Know about this increase when, when you presented our budget? Did we, did we actually allocate this $856,000 on the budget? Or it's going to be on top what you presented to us two weeks ago?
We have, we have a $2.5 million budget for. The liability, but I need to check to make sure that we also budgeted. Sufficient for the property and the other line items, but for the liability, we budgeted 2.5 million, excuse me.
And, and how much did we pay the ICMA last year? How was the total?
Uh, we were at about 1.7.
1.7, okay. All right. So it could be, it could be close to.
Correct, we may need to come back and ask for a, a small amount. You know, at mid-year, but it, it won't be as, as, as large as, as what we thought, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Interim City Manager Norris has a presentation on the agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro temp, city council members. Hawthorne Police Department will present a monthly report. At this time, I will turn it over to our Chief of Police, Chief Ishi.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, Mayor Pro temp and city council members, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Amy Yoshida. She is in charge of our Community Affairs Bureau, just to give you a quick update on some of the things they've done in the past month or so. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me tonight. I just wanted to start off with, I was recently reassigned to Community Affairs and I actually started at an exciting time because now as restrictions. Have lifted, we're ready to hit the ground running. So we've actually already started, so I just want to go over some of the highlights. Today was our first Coffee with a Cop. We had the coffee with the cop at the McDonald's at Rosecrans and Hindry. It was a great turnout. We had some wonderful conversations with everyone that stopped by. And this is something that we are continuing to host in the future at various locations throughout the city. Today was our second footsall at Memorial Park. We had the grand opening with LA Galaxy last week and the LA Galaxy Crew and Cosmo. Again, we had a great turnout. It was so great to see all the kids interacting and having a great time and. Actually, just being able to be kids and have fun. Every third week, we have footsall at Jim Thorpe Park, so next week we'll be at Jim Thorpe, and we will continue to do this throughout the summer. We've also started our Neighborhood Association meetings. We've already met with Holly Park, Traditions at the Greens, as well as Fusion. And we're looking forward to meeting with other neighborhood associations in the future. We, we've reached out to everyone, but if. If we did miss anyone or, or somebody's ready to, to have a meeting. And/or wants us to come to any event that they're going to host, we'll be more than happy to, so. Feel free to reach out to us, but we are going to continue to build all of this back up. We've already taken, taken our trailer out to Holly Park Park as well as Memorial Park. And we continue, we'll continue to do that throughout the summer especially. And at that time, we are going to probably just even make it a little more friendly or familiar. We're going to put our canopies out there just right out on the street. So we don't take up so much room with the trailers. So if you ever do see our trailer and/or our canopies, please feel free to stop by. And we're going to just start popping up in, in various neighborhoods throughout the city, and we're looking forward to doing that, and we're hoping. Everybody will come out, because again, it's just going to be nice to interact with everyone again. Basically, those are the main things that, that we've been doing already, and again, we're, we're just anxious to. Become involved again. And if anyone's uncomfortable with, with in-person contact, we're still willing to meet virtually as well. So that's it in that shell. Thank you so much.
Okay. Can you have, anybody have any questions?
Over the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Amy.
Hello.
Hello. Congratulations on your promotion to the Community Affairs. I think that that was a natural because, you know, you have done so much in the community and, you know, even through the. American Cancer Society Relay for Life, you know, all this year that we worked together, you're very involved, so I think it was a natural for you to be there. So I'm glad to hear that you guys went back, you know, to do Coffee with the Cop. If I knew, I would be dead this morning, but I didn't know. But I'm glad to see that you guys are back into action, you know, especially the footsall and, and, and all the, even the. Our trailer going to the parks and the other thing that I want to commend you and achieve. Because, you know, when you go to the parking lots, some of these supermarkets, you guys have that. Device that, that talks to people, talk about safety and about COVID and stuff, so that's a very, very good. So I'm glad to see that you guys are going back, but you, like you said, you guys have been doing this even during COVID. Because you are there, so thank you and I appreciate it, and I'll see you around.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
Yeah. Mayor Pro temp?
Yes, thank you. Hello, Amy, so glad to see you and so glad to hear that you're in charge of Community Affairs. So the schedule for Coffee with a Cop, and I too was not aware of it this morning, although we had a groundbreaking, so I would probably have not been able to go anyway. But do you have a schedule that's published for Coffee with a Cop?
We're working on it. We already have one scheduled for next month at Town Place Suites. We will put it out on all our social media and we'll, we'll have it on, put up on the website as well.
Thank you. I would like to, 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 to come to the next one whenever it is.
Yes, and then I, yes, and then we already have August planned at the McDonald's at Rosecrans.
Good, wonderful. Well, good luck to you and, and thank you for, for, for getting out in the community and, and bringing us all those events. We're going to have National Night Out on August 3rd, so hopefully you'll participate in that. We'll make sure you get all the information you need.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you.
You.
Councilmember Montero has a presentation on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have Dr. Morgan on. Hawthorne School District. Oh, hello, Dr. Morgan, nice seeing you. I know you, you, you have a wonderful presentation, and I have to say that, that, that the selection could not have been the best. So it's because it's an excellent, excellent choice, so I'll let you go for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro temp, council members and Hawthorne community. I am the very proud superintendent of the Hawthorne School District. And I thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to share a Hawthorne School District honor with Chief Ishi. Earlier this month, we had our end of the year celebration and we had a special presentation. Of the Roger G. Bly Leadership Award. Roger Bly was a former superintendent in the Hawthorne School District. And Mr. Bly admired strong leadership and the qualities that it takes for a leader to be successful. Upon his retirement from the Hawthorne School District, the Roger G. Bly Leadership Award. Was established to honor people or organizations who exhibit these important leadership skills. This year, at our annual recognition ceremony, Chief Michael Ishi was presented with this award in acknowledgement of his outstanding leadership. And his important work with the school district. Through Chief Ishi's leadership, a strong partnership has been maintained and strengthened with the Hawthorne School District. His commitment to building positive relationships throughout the community and recognition of the important role. That the school district plays in that commitment is only one example of the reason we have bestowed this award upon him. It is not by chance that the Hawthorne Police Depos, the Police Department is a positive force in the community. Chief Ishi's leadership and expectations for the entire department are evident in every interaction we have with the department. I couldn't ask for a better partner in the important work that we do in the community. I'm honored to present this award to Chief Michael Ishi, and I thank you for allowing me the time this evening to show you the presentation. This is actually the award, which I will be getting to Chief Ishi in person. But I can't thank the city and the chief enough for the wonderful partnership we have, and it is very well deserved, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chief?
On behalf of the Hawthorne Police Department, because it's really. Everybody here is committed to building those positive relationships with everybody in the community, but especially last year with. All of the issues that happened during COVID and, and watching the schools. Really scramble to do their best to meet the needs of, of our community, their parents, the, the students, the faculty. We just wanted to do our best to be a partner with them and we were truly inspired and honored to see. The, the schools be a part of our community from the free food getaway, you know, to giving, giving food to the community, helping with wifi. And to receive this award on behalf of the police department, I'm truly humbled. I don't receive many awards, I really appreciate it, and I'm, I'm a little embarrassed. But thank you very much. I'll accept this on behalf of really our school resource officers and our police department. Thank you very much for a great partnership and we look forward to, as we open up, to continue working and, and building our relationships and be mentors. And a positive role model for our students and our community. Thank you very much again, Superintendent Morgan.
Congratulations with more, and thank you, Dr. Helen Morgan.
Through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hands up, okay. Again, I want to thank Dr. Morgan and Hawthorne School District because I know every year, you know, you go to this. Deliberation, who to pick for the leadership, so I think, you know, you did an outstanding choice. Because our chief, you know, he have done outstanding job out there, you know, helping the schools, not just the schools, but the community, our parts, you know. Putting a police officer on bikes and come up with new ideas for community policing. And to help the school district is very important, and we have had this partnership with Hawthorne PD for many, many years, and the chief have elevated. That partnership, so I commend both of you for your both leadership because you are outstanding in our community, so God bless it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro temp?
Yes, and I want to, to just reiterate what was said by Councilmember Montero and to say that. Thank you, Dr. Morgan, for, for your partnership with our community. And, and thank you for working with Chief Ishi, and Chief Ishi, thank you again for being the kind of leader we always knew you are, we always know that you are. And for, and for doing the kinds of activities that bring pride to the city of Hawthorne and. And, and displaying the excellent, excellent leadership that you do in developing relationships between the community and. And, and the police department. So thank you for all you do, and thank you, Dr. Morgan, for recognizing his leadership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Okay, now we'll move on to the next item. Interim City Manager has a presentation on the agenda.
Good evening. Tonight we have Robert Thompson and Michael Hurley. Robert Thompson is Operations Manager for Cal Water Services. And Michael Hurley is the Water Resource Manager for Cal Water Services. At this time, I will turn over the presentation to Cal War.
Go ahead.
All righty, thank you, sir, for the introduction. Let me go ahead and share my screen. All righty, how's that look? Coming through okay? I hope.
Yes.
Brilliant. All right, well, no, thank you for the introduction. As you said, my name is Robert Thompson, Operations Manager, kind of local contact for the. City of Hawthorne Operations Contract that Cal Water is engaged with. And Michael Hurley, our Water Resources Manager is here to, to take the reins here shortly after me as the subject matter expert presenting on the. The 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and he'll also comment on the 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Not a, not a mis, mistype there, it is the, the 2020 plan, we're one year off, but still nonetheless rolling forward. And before we want to jump into the presentation here, wanted to thank Alan and his team in Public Works there for helping facilitate this. And, and continuing the partnership that Cal Water has with, with the city of Hawthorne as a leader. So, Michael, I'll, I'll go ahead and do the clicking and we can spotlight Michael there, he'll do the majority of the talking and off we go.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Agenda for tonight is very straightforward. We'll cover the purposes and objectives of the, the plan. We'll give high-level overview of both Urban Water Management Plan and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. As we'll talk about, the Urban Water Management Plan is a long-term planning document, but. We did want to take a moment tonight to give you a brief update on the drought, given the publicity. And then finally, we'll have some time for comments and questions. Next slide, please. Okay, so this effort is really the culmination of a month-long outreach effort. Back in February, we reached out to a, a number of relevant entities, and by that I mean the city, adjacent cities. Waste water and water providers that are contributors to water supply reliability in the area. A second notice was sent out in May. Recently, there were two notices posted in the local newspaper about tonight's meeting. The plan itself, the plans themselves have been up for review on the company's website for the last, since early June. And tonight, we're here for the public hearing. Next slide, please. Okay, so the Urban Water Management Plan was passed back in 1983 in response to the late 70s drought. It's a, really requires all agents, water providers of a certain size to put together planning efforts that's ensure adequate supplies. Across the range of conditions, and we'll talk about those. Not all agencies have to provide these. Only utilities with 3,000-plus services or serving 3,000 acre feet in a year have to do this. The Act requires a 20-year planning horizon. Cal Water goes out 25 years. Just want to get a little more comprehensive look. These plans must be updated every five years and the plan will be submitted on July 1st. These plans are important because they're often the basis for water supply assessments and water supply verifications. These documents are required for developments of a certain size, roughly speaking, home, 500 units of homes or 500,000 square feet of. Commercial development, so these documents provide the basis for those plans. So the elements themselves, we'll cover some of these, but we'll talk about the surface area, which this group is obviously familiar with. How we do our population forecast. The plan also has supply and demand projections. Out through 2045. And we do that in single, normal and dry year, multiple dry years. We want to demonstrate that we have sufficient supplies. The plan also covers our conservation and demand management efforts. There is a climate change component which increases every five years in terms of its requirements, and then. Again, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan is an element, so. Next slide, please. I think we're slide behind here. One more, if you would, Rob. Okay, an overview of the district. Cal Water's been serving the Hawthorne, the city of Hawthorne since 1996. It's one public water system. Some of our districts are split up, but here we've got a single system. Bounty of supplies here. We use groundwater, recycled water and purchased water, both purchased from the West Basin Municipal Water District. There's a distribution system includes one well and then five surface storage structures located throughout the surface area. Next slide, please. So as I noted, there's a bounty of supplies here. The diversity, the groundwater pump from the cell. The diversity, groundwater pump from the south, excuse me, the west coast sub-basin. There's also treated water, which is essentially surface water imported by the Metropolitan Water District and distributed via the West Basin Municipal Water District. In addition, the West Basin Municipal Water District also has its own local recycled supplies that serve a portion of the city's needs. We always are continuing to investigate additional supplies. However, at this current time, we don't have any planned use of other supplies such as DSal or direct potable reuse at this point. Next slide, please. So our demand projection methodology, this is a complex model. I won't go into great depth, but I just want to give you a sense that we have a tool that allows us to forecast beyond the 20 years required by the Urban Water Management Plan. This tool allows us to project demands for the service area in normal, wet and dry years. It does consider climate change impacts primarily at this point with a look at different anticipated increases in temperature out through the planning horizon. In some ways, it's a simple model. We use historical data to develop a per-service, you know, per-connection estimate for both residential and commercial connections. And then we multiply that by projected housing and employment growth forecasts provided by the Southern California Association of Governments. Next slide, please. Here's a quick look at what we're seeing in the future for the City of Hawthorne. We have three graphs here. The one in the upper left is our projection, historical and projected population. The historical population growth is shown here in orange, modest as you can see, and we're projecting modest population growth out through the 2050 timeframe for the city. As you might imagine, that correlates closely with the projected services, which is shown in the upper right-hand corner. Again, modest increase historically and modest growth projected out into the future. The bottom graphic is a look at the average demand per service or per connection. As you can see in the orange, we've had a decrease from roughly over 700 gallons per service per day down to about 500 gallons per person per day. You know, that's a result of many of our conservation programs and the push for efficiency throughout the service area. And we're projecting that to continue on a, to decrease on a per-service basis. Next slide, please.
You have two minutes, Mr. Hurley?
Sure. We look at the projected mans in total when we combine the growth. As we see, we're, I've seen a significant decrease over the last 20 years and we're essentially projecting a flat demand going forward. You know, just a little slight increase of less than 1%. Next slide, please. So in 2008, there was a passage of the Water Conservation Act by the legislature known as XBX7. Many people know it as 20 by 2020. The goal is quite simple here to try and reduce per capita use by 20%. By this, now we're at 2020 and as shown by this graphic, the city has met that moving from little under 100, a little 100 gallons per person per day to roughly 77 gallons per day at this point. So we met that target as required. Next slide, please. So this graphic is showing that we are projecting to be able to meet all the demands going forward in wet, normal and, excuse me, normal, dry and multiple dry years. We've been able to do that historically. We don't see that changing. The west coast basin is adjudicated and we don't foresee any problems pumping at the rates we are at now. So if there are unexpected shortages, will be addressed by our Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Next slide, please. Local topics, wanted to touch on that our purchase supplies are available. You see stories up and down the state, but our regional provider, the Metropolitan Water District, actually has more storage than it ever has had historically. The west coast basin has been a reliable source of supply and we continue to project that it will be. And we have, Cal Water has excess rights should the need arise. Next slide, please. So last, I wanted to touch on our Water Shortage Contingency Plan. This is a comprehensive plan for drought management. Each year, we do an annual assessment of supply reliability and then there is a six stages of shortage that are quantified from 0 to 10% cuts all the way to 50% or greater. Associated with this are specific response actions at different stages as well as a communication protocol and then a monitoring and enforcement and reporting mechanisms. Next slide, please. So I did want to touch on the drought quickly. We've seen it in the news. We are monitoring this. We've established an internal drought response committee. We're proactively developing our conservation message. We want to be sensitive what's going on to the other parts of the state. So we will be rolling out programs, additional programs. We're closely coordinating with other water agencies and bodies on this. And we'll follow our Water Shortage Contingency Plan if needed. So that would, that is it. As I noted, the draft plans are available on our website. We'll be accepting any comments through the end of the day. We'll certainly, if there are issues or comments here tonight, we'll certainly incorporate them. And if there are issues that come up later, you can reach us at planninginfo@calwater.com. Glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Hurley for bringing the presentation. And it's good to hear that Hawthorne, you know, met the 2020 goal. So we didn't spend more water than we're supposed to. So I'm glad to hear that we met that goal. For the near future, do you think basis on the California, the governor declared a state of emergency on water, are they going to do against the reduction, for example, for the lawns and the car wash? Are those in place for the summer or it's not going to happen this summer?
Well, I can't definitively say it won't, but I would project it wouldn't be. I think what happened coming out of the drought last time was a real push by many, particularly the Southern California Water Agencies who made large investments and really may not have needed to take such drastic action, given their actual supply conditions. But there was a move statewide to really make sure that everybody participated. And I think this time, as I noted in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, there's an actual annual assessment requirement now. And to the degree that you can demonstrate you have supplies, you're not required to take such drastic actions as we saw last time.
All right. Thank you very much and have a good summer then. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communications?
Yes, I can. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member.
Any communications?
Yes, we do. We have a total of three.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Jorge Limon? You can go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Well, I have three concerns with being a homeowner here in the City of Hawthorne. One of them is the quality of the housing as far as my neighbors, the upkeep of their homes. It doesn't, it doesn't match up to the rest of us that don't, that try to keep our houses nicely painted, green grass. I live in a double alleyway here on 118th and the alleyways are, the alleys are pretty much the asphalt, it's coming apart. And yeah, you guys do come through and patch up, but I seen some of the other alleys that have been poured in concrete. And I know concrete is more money, but trying to see if we can get something going with that. And last but not least, they were telling me that you guys, that the council has put a hold on impregnated parking for the block, for a certain neighborhood or just in general. Can anybody answer why or when would that be open for discussion again?
The council can't address you directly, sir?
Yeah. Okay, okay. So that pretty much is just the houses, you know, the neighbors, some people don't keep up their houses and it should be regulated that you gotta keep at least a decent looking home, especially when the rest of them are trying to do their best to make them look like a nice neighborhood. That's it. Just the alleys and the parking.
City Clerk, can you provide his address, please, if you may?
Sorry?
No, Mr. Limon.
Mr. City Clerk, please just do that after we hang up. Just contact them back and get all this information. You know, we used to have reports, grievance reports or request reports. Make sure you get that right after the.
Exactly. We already have his information, so we'll follow up.
Is that okay, Mr. Interim City Manager?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Limon. We'll follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You have a good night.
Next, please.
Okay. So next, we have Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, you can go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello. Good wonderful evening, City Council in the City of Hawthorne. Latell Williams here. Hope everyone had a wonderful Father's Day weekend and a June 15th weekend. What a wonderful weekend to have that as California is opening up. The community was really listening to the financial report at the last meeting and they had a tire relief pertaining to the American greed that hit our city with the gold gem. They wanted to verbally give some marbels and accolades to the persons that's trying to ease up that debt from the city. And they were very concerned about the other American greed plague that hit with the $25,000 from our prior financial director. Have the city recovered those monies? Has it been paid back in full? And the city project, street project on Pereira is coming along, very wonderful, beautifying our city. And we were concerned about if we could get advertisement sign, LED sign put up at Imperial and Hawthorne Boulevard that will really improve our Boulevard as well. And El Segundo in Hawthorne Boulevard, once again, where that metal sign is just standing there as a skeleton and rusty as it can be. However, thank you so much for my time and enjoy, enjoy the coming out of California, opening up, but still be safe because another plague has entered in. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Next, please.
Yes. So last, we have Ms. Latia Castillo. It went to voicemail, so we'll try one more time and then if it goes to voicemail, then we'll leave it at that. Okay, she's on now.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Ms. Castillo. You have three minutes. Go ahead. Ms. Castillo? Hello?
Let me try again.
Is she there? Yes, she is here. Go ahead, Ms. Castillo. You have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. I am a resident of North Hawthorne on 120th Street right across the Hawthorne Airport. And there is a safety concern on 120th Street with everyone speeding and driving more than 45 miles per hour. There was a study that was done here, which I believe is not accurate and it's not a test that I believe that it needs to be done again. But I am urging for some kind of safety measures. There's been a lot of some tests that have almost physically hurt one of my family members and almost my five-year-old son. It's a safety concern. I am asking for some life. We've been talking with the engineer, Mr. Allen Ma. And I feel like there's still no concerns about this street. And I'm urging my City Council and my representatives to please help us with this. It's something that our neighborhood is really even thinking of going into litigation with the City of Hawthorne because it's a safety concern and we that live here are suffering because of that. There is so much speeding that's going on here and it is a safety issue and we're all concerned about this. So I'm urging you again on 120th Street, right across the street from the Hawthorne Airport, where there's an accident every month, for us to get some kind of safety measures to be, to be held here on 120th Street. We keep asking, we're asking for the speed limits to be reduced and nothing is getting done. It's been a year and a half. There's been accidents here every single month. It is a safety issue. And my concern is that it's $100,000, but it's better than to have somebody dead or somebody from our neighborhood whenever our kids get hurt because of the speeding that goes on in the street all the single time. Again, please, on 120th Street, right across the Hawthorne Airport, that whole strip, we're all concerned citizens and we're asking of your help.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. You have a good night.
Thank you.
That's the end of public comments.
Oh, Mr. Interim City Manager, are you in contact or you guys have the contact information for Ms. Castillo?
Absolutely, we do.
Just stay, stay in touch with her and is that study completed?
I would have to talk to the Public Works Director about that.
Just let us know. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope, I was in.
Oral communication is closed, order. Mr. Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have five items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item nine, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 10, City Treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item 13, Resolution Number 8278, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, Hawthorne waiving permit fees for outdoor dining in the City of Hawthorne through June 30th, 2022. Item 14, Resolution Number 8287, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting a records retention schedule for the Hawthorne Housing Authority pursuant to Government Code Section 34090. Item 15, Resolution Number 8288, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the destruction of Section 8 housing records over three years old for November 30th, 2007 through September 30th, 2017. Pursuant to Resolution Number 8288, City of Hawthorne Housing Authority records retention schedule and pursuant to Government Code Section 34090 and 24 CFR 908.101 point for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Public hearing, item number 17, please.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing to adopt Resolution 8285, adopting the City of Hawthorne 2020's Urban Water Management Plan and authorizing its filing with the California Department of Water Resources. Public Works Department Declaration, publication filed. No written communications were received.
Okay, before we proceed, Interim City, okay, I'm going to ask whoever's not speaking to mute themselves. Hello? Okay, thank you. Don't know how that happened, who or who was, but thank you, guys. Interim City Attorney, before we proceed, our agenda, our agenda and our, the logistics of our City Council meeting with regards to reading resolutions and ordinances, are we in conformance with state law as is? resolutions and ordinances, are we in conformance with state law as is?
It is, and uh we have submitted a legal confidential on that. Um it should be in your packet. Um the Give me one second. We don't necessarily need to read everything into the record. Um there are ordinances that should be unless it's summarized. But we don't necessarily have to have everything read unless it's an ordinance.
Uh are we in sync, Mister City Clerk, with that requirement? And have been?
Yeah, we are at this point.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted just to clarify that. Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead. I think, uh did you already read the public hearing?
Yeah, so now I'm at resolution number eight-two-eight-five.
Oh, is there anyone anyone who wishes to speak on on this topic?
No, we did not receive any comments.
Resolution number eight-two-eight-five?
Yeah, all right. Resolution number eight-two-eight-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, state of California, adopting the city of Hawthorne twenty-twenty urban water management plan and authorizing its filing with the California Department of Water Resources for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Council member Montero?
I.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing on number eighteen, please.
Okay, now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of our ordinances, number two-two-three to adopt the notice of exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and approval of amendments to section three-point-three contained in appendix B of title seventeen of the Hawthorne Municipal Code related to buildings crossing zones, boundaries and making findings and support thereof. Planning department's declaration publication filed, no written communications were received.
Okay, so that was any communications on that one?
No, there were no uh communications.
Can you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, I can. Um ordinance number two-two-three, first reading in ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adopting a notice of exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and approval of amendments to section three-point-three contained in appendix B. Uh I'm sorry, design guide for highest density residential and mixed-use development of title seventeen zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code related to building crossing zone boundaries and making finding and support thereof for introduction.
Okay, I move to introduce. Okay, next we have general matters, item number twenty-one, Mister interim city manager, go ahead.
Good evening, city council. Uh tonight's presentation, I have Jesse Ramirez and Dulce Medina. Will give a quarterly update regarding our homeless achievements in Hawthorne. I am very excited to announce that the city of Hawthorne has been selected to receive bridge funding that will continue to fund our grant that we have with LA County. Uh this bridge funding will be available from July first, twenty-twenty-one until twelve-thirty-one, twenty-one. Uh with that being said, I'd like to introduce uh Jesse Ramirez and Dulce Medina to present um our achievements for the last three months. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. Just to confirm, Eric, will you be playing our presentation? All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Right, so thank you for the time and consideration. My name is Jesse Ramirez. I'm the homeless services coordinator and the liaison for the city of Hawthorne, also working under St. Margaret Center in Lenox. And I would like uh to introduce to you all to my colleague.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, council members.
So tonight Dulce and Medina and myself will be sharing that we uh what we have been doing from January all the way up until June of twenty-twenty-one. So we'll go ahead to the next slide. Uh we can go on to the next one. So we're opening up uh with this with this slide because uh this is what we pride ourselves in behind every number, outcome and deliverable. There is a person and there is a story. Um we use person-first language. We use a strength-based approach and we use a trauma-informed care model. Um as such, by using these evidence-based practices and interventions, Dulce and myself have been able to maximize the impacts of our homelessness efforts um throughout March of twenty-twenty. We go to the next slide. So our program is named the Hawthorne Homeless Coordination Program. And since Dulce came on board in December twenty-twenty, uh the program has really been able to strengthen and maximize our CES component. So just as a refresher, the coordinated entry system, which is CES, facilitates the coordination and the management of resources and services through a crisis response system. What CES allows Dulce and myself to do is that we're able to connect people to interventions to rapidly resolve their housing crisis. So we create CES profiles for them. Uh we track their confidential and privileged information and then we also conduct housing and social service needs assessments in order to connect the most vulnerable people experiencing homelessness in the city to available housing and available supportive services in an equitable fashion. We also host a clinical case management program with ongoing caseloads, um with check-ins also happening every day. And then we're also very adamant about our homeless prevention efforts, especially with the onset of a pandemic. Through through uh assessments, we link residents who have or experiencing housing and securities in the city to the Hawthorne Rental Assistance Program and to the Housing Rights Center. We also conduct collaborative street outreach on a weekly basis, which means we're uh responding to LEHOP requests and by going through the community and to homeless encampments to engage with folks on an active basis. Furthermore, we assist our St. Margaret Center team with our in-reach services um eligible for all northern, south Bay folks experiencing homelessness. And by showing Hawthorne's representation and collaboration with other providers, we we uh we accept all of the community providers and the partnerships um just so we can make this work a little bit more efficient and effective. We can go to the next slide. So this is our data at a glance from January all the way up until May. Some data is from January to June. Thirty-four percent of our participants identify as cisgender females. Those enrolled in our program as of today, what we have noticed is that they are economically disadvantaged. Meaning they have a low fixed income, low earnings or no earnings whatsoever. The data on our side suggests that on average, the people who do have an income in our program only receive about six hundred dollars on a monthly uh monthly basis. To the right, you will see that ninety-one people are enrolled in our HHCP program. Meaning they qualify for service coordination, also for outreach supplies, meaning food bags, hygiene kits, COVID PP and COVID nineteen linkage to treatment and to testing. What we also found out was that through our participants, the average age is fifty years old. Next slide, please. Thirty-four percent of of HH PP participants are black and African-American, forty-two percent are Latinx, sixty-five percent identify as cisgender males. And we currently have a fifteen percent base where we are currently ser- uh providing services solely in Spanish. Next slide. So in the purple box, you'll see that we have submitted a hundred referrals within January to May. Throughout um on the right-hand side, sorry, on the on the green box, we've created forty-four profiles. Which means folks never had either access or engagement with somebody who had access to the CES system. Or they were just living in the shadows and nobody knew about them. So now they are en- enrolled in the CES system. We've also conducted fifteen CES assessments and on a monthly basis, on average, we are engaging with forty unduplicated people. Next slide. For the CES document readiness uploads, this essentially means that part of a housing process, especially for permanent housing, is that we have to obtain documentation. Which means IDs, social security cards, um homeless certifications, income verification. So throughout actually a span of a year from March twenty-twenty to March twenty-twenty-one, we've uploaded more than four hundred documents. Meaning we are getting these folks ready so they can sign their name to a lease. And in a matter of uh this year, in fact, of two months, we've uploaded uploaded more than a hundred documents. On the right-hand side, on outreach and engagement services, you'll all see that we provide an equitable amount of our services from hygiene kits, food bags, brochures to COVID nineteen testing and also brochures and our community resource guides. Next slide, please. And this is where Dulce is gonna take uh take the lead.
Evening again, uh everyone. I'm Dulce. I am the Client Resource Coordinator under St. Margaret for the city of Hawthorne, working alongside Jesse. And I and I get to report basically on the fun part of the job, um which I considered fun. Um the engagement and community relations with uh the community and providers here in the city of Hawthorne. Uh so in an average, my my main role uh for the Hawthorne Homeless Coordination Program is the outreach and community engagement. On average, we see about twenty-five people experiencing uh homelessness when we're doing street outreach with our partners. Uh just in the month of May alone, we saw forty-two people um experiencing homelessness. Out of those forty-two, we were able to link six uh clients to uh transitional housing. They were placed um in those type of settings and three additional were uh placed in Project Womki, which are the motel and hotel uh program. Next slide, please. And uh with our outreach efforts, we're not doing this on our own. We need help from uh the community. And we're very fortunate to partner up with the Hawthorne Police Department, Harbor Interface Services and St. Margaret Center. We provide outreach uh one to three times during the week and I definitely have to do a shout out to the Hawthorne Police Department. Uh Lieutenant Romero and his team, Sergeant Elliott, Officer Khan and Detective Setos have been a tremendous uh collaborative partner with uh the program. We have been the ones that have actually been going out on the on a weekend basis and maybe once a week uh to provide outreach services. And uh with nurse this collaboration, we've noticed uh a tremendous success finding these clients as uh Jesse reported in the data. We uh just in the in the month of May alone, we were able to uh contact forty-two new people that are experiencing homelessness. Next slide. And the fun part, this is the fun part, which of course I love doing because it's engaging our community providers, community residents. And in April twenty-fourth, we were able to uh partner up with Lutheran Trinity Church and have a cloth- a drive-through clothing drive. And we were fortunate to have the uh Hawthorne residents donate approximately five hundred pounds of clothing. And we have been distributing both Jesse and I have been distributing during our street outreach program uh in or out of the office when clients come and select clothing items. So we have actually gotten rid of of all the five hundred pounds of clothing that we received on April. So this was a tremendous success. Next slide, please. And on April twenty-six, we were able to partner up with um Housing for Health and um do a uh vaccine roving clinic at Memorial Park. And on April twenty-six, we just we started at Memorial Park, but we also traveled with the roving clinic to two different encampments within the city of Hawthorne. One on Prairie and Imperial on the Hawthorne side and the other one on Hawthorne Boulevard uh next to the Dollar Tree. Uh we were able to uh vaccinate approximately ten to twelve people during that event in the morning hours when we went out on April twenty-six. Next slide, please. And on May twenty-fifth, we did the follow-up uh roving vaccine clinic. And this time we went a little bit bigger with the approval of uh Yvonne and we were able to invite twelve different providers from the city of Hawthorne and outside within the LA County area and provide various realms of social service programming uh related to uh rental assistance, uh mental health, uh clinic services, uh shelter. Uh they were able to get vaccinated as well. We were able to vaccinate sixteen people experiencing homelessness and over fifty-five plus community members, uh not just homeless. Were able to uh participate in the fair, walked away with clothing, walked away with food items, with snack items, vaccine information, um mental health information and just the various services that the Hawthorne uh city provides. So we were, this was an extreme success for us and we're hoping to repeat it at least on annual basis for the city of Hawthorne. Next slide. Next slide, please. And uh last but not least, I just want to remind everyone that uh within the Hawthorne City website, you can access our homeless resource guide which has valuable information. You could also access our LEHOP uh portal for all Hawthorne residents and providers to access. And just know that all LEHOP calls uh or requests, I'm sorry, are uh answered to whenever we do street outreach, which is once a week or sometimes three times, depending on the LEHOP request and all the services that we need to provide to to our clientele out in in various areas. So uh not but lastly, just please remember to use LEHOP and access our Hawthorne City website to get all the valuable information for our Hawthorne Resource Guide. And uh that is it. Thank you.
Uh Dulce, can you ask Eric to go back to the uh resource, the resource guide for Hawthorne, please?
Yes, Eric, can you um I think Eric does one handling. Can you go back to to the resource guide slide? Yes. There it is. The next slide. It was actually the first slide.
Eric is the second to last slide.
Yeah, the second to the last slide.
Yeah, just just uh yeah, just keep it there for for a minute because I want people to take that uh in consideration of all the servers that we provide, that you guys have all these resources o- over there for people to access. It's not just the uh LA HOP, right?
Oh, correct. Uh people, wh- whenever they go onto the Hawthorne City website, as you can see, there's veteran assistance. Uh the Hawthorne Homeless Program assistance, Jesse's and my contact information is there. We have a reference to mental health, substance use and recovery. We have uh various providers that assist with uh recovery detox like the Curtis Tucker Center, uh behavioral health services, the Southwest, the uh Alano Club. So it's it's a variety of social services within the city of Hawthorne and uh the neighborhood cities that are able to assist uh ci- uh Hawthorne residents and uh people experiencing homelessness.
Okay, I think you guys are done, right? So so I asked a quick a quick question?
Yes, yes, we are. We are done. Thank you.
Oh, no, no, no. Thank you for your Thank you for you guys' presentation. Uh it was excellent, you know, to give us this quarterly report uh because we need to show our community that uh we are invest in the homeless programs and we're trying to uh work with the homeless uh out there, try to give them uh all the services that we can provide and and eventually down the line, maybe, you know, how some of these uh unhoused individual. Uh Jesse, when you mentioned uh that the majority of the people receive about six hundred dollar a debt is coming from SSI or the general relief? Uh so they don't qualify for other resources? Money-wise?
Yeah, so what we've found is that actually throughout January to June, everybody has different income uh sources. Some people do have SSI, some people have cash assistance for immigrants, other people have GR. But just based off of the average of everybody's income, it's around six hundred dollars. We do have folks who have an income of um maybe twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollars compared to other folks who have an income maybe twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollars compared to other folks who have an income of two hundred.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
And just to add a little bit more, those those folks that are above the eleven hundred mark, they're usually a combination of SSI and their pension or retirement.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that that amount of money doesn't doesn't even pay for studio apartment. So that's that's a big problem.
You're right. That's what we're finding out when we're looking for for housing or if you don't have a navigation.
Yeah. And then I want to think that you guys highlight i- is the fact that now you're seeing most seniors fifty and over become homeless, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much for presentation. Outstanding. I appreciate it.
Mayor Professor?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for your for your dedication and your really extensive work that you're doing to to serve the homeless population. Let me ask you a question about the numbers. So based on your slide where you said HHCP metrics at a glance. So the numbers are, is that ninety-one plus fifty and that's a hundred and forty-one? Is that the total number of homeless that we have?
No, it's not. So the ninety-one people experiencing homelessness enrolled in HHCP are folks that we have engaged with. We have identified more than ninety-one different, meaning unduplicated people who are experiencing homelessness in Hawthorne. Meaning those folks enrolled in our program, that just means that they have our assistance, meaning they have our support, where they get outreach supplies, and then they also get the service coordination piece where we assess them and then we link them up to the appropriate provider. Because obviously, Dulce and I, we would love to take everybody, but we also are are short short staffed, so we can only take a few amount of people to actually do the case management work.
And what is the, so do you know what the total number of homeless in Hawthorne are?
Based off, I'm gonna go based off of the twenty twenty homeless count. There are a little bit over two hundred people experiencing homelessness.
So so you've 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 actually engaged about a hundred and forty-one, so there are probably about sixty that you have not engaged. Is that right?
Well, we have ninety-one enrolled currently in the program, meaning we have an active contact with them. We have actually engaged with more than a hundred and sixty people experiencing homelessness in the city.
Okay, so how do you measure success in this program?
Well, we measure success by ultimately getting them linked to housing, meaning safe and stable housing. But we will, before getting there, we also know that that's a process. A success for us is actually engaging with somebody who had never engaged with services before. So getting them enrolled in CES is a huge step. But what we have found is once people are enrolled in CES, getting to transitional housing or permanent housing or whatever type of housing that the that the person is requesting, it makes it much, much, much easier and swift on us and for them.
So how many people have you actually been able to move into transitional housing?
Well, I can speak on the Project Room Key numbers. We've we've housed more than thirty-five people in an amount of a of a year.
Okay, so I guess I'm what I'm trying to figure out is of the numbers you speak of, you've housed more than thirty-five. So does that mean that you've reduced the number of homeless in the city from two hundred to whatever that is, one hundred and fifty-five?
Yeah, we we can suggest that. But what we're also seeing too is people who are experienced or have experienced homelessness in the past, they're actually more likely to experience homelessness in the future as well. That's why adding that supportive services and our case management services to actually have them remain and sustain their housing is also important too. Just because we have a linkage, obviously, that's a success. But we also have on our backs, on the back burner that we want to make sure that they're actually stably housed.
And I agree with you, except that what I don't want to see happening is more and more people coming into Hawthorne to take advantage of the services we have who will not go into transitional housing. And we just consider to continue to have an influx of homeless people, but we're not actually placing, in in other words, we're not reducing the homeless population. What I'd like to see is a reduction of the homeless population. And do you feel that that's happening?
That most definitely, most definitely. And that's something that we don't want to see any, but we don't want to see that too. People sleeping on the concrete and sleeping in places that are inhabitable. That's not, the goal is not for us to just say hi to them and that's that. Our our goal is to work with them so we can get them to that place.
And so I'm of the, I'm saying of the people you've serviced this year, how many do you, how many have you successfully placed?
I'm gonna give you a rough estimate, say more than thirty-five, but I can give you precise number when I look back at my data.
Okay, I'd like to know how many, and I'd like to know whether they they continue to stay housed and whether they, whether you have any problems with slippage, whether they come back into the homeless situation after they've been housed.
Yeah, I agree. I can report back to you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Dulce.
You're welcome.
Mr. Innen City Manager, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have four items for your approval.
I move. Second. Roll call vote, please.
Who is the second?
Um, Montero.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Mayor, let's see, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Vargas flex mayors and councilmembers voting yes.
Okay, item number thirty-two was has been pulled. Will we, what is the liking of our city council member colleagues? Go into the closed sessions first, right away or what? I'm gonna move that. I'm gonna move that. We just go straight to the closed sessions and give our reports right at the end. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Are we going to be able to combine both, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we we can combine both, and I'll just make a separate announcement with respect to number thirty-four, thirty-five when we come out.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on a closed session, item number thirty-four or item number thirty-eight?
Thirty-five.
Or yeah, number thirty-five or item number four?
No, it should be number thirty-four and number thirty-five.
Yes. Item, is there anyone who's wishes to speak on closed session, item number thirty-four and item number thirty-five?
No, we do not receive any commentary.
If if not, I'll declare oral communication is close ordered. I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We're in recess. Um.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, "What should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?"
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm planks. Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The Organics Law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food...
We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. City Attorney, can you please report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In closed session, the City Council met to discuss item number 34, initiation of litigation, one potential case. The City Council has voted. All four members of the City Council have approved to take action. Should I just go on to number 35?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, please.
The City Attorney has been instructed with respect to number 35.
All right, council members and elected officials, reports of Mr. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to those watching from home and those who came out tonight to make their voices heard. Happy belated June 2 to everyone. Thank you to everyone who came out to our third free produce giveaway on Saturday, including our amazing volunteers. We gave out 135 bags of free produce and boxes of Girl Scout cookies, so thank you to the Girl Scouts as well. We also registered a few people to vote that day. Our next giveaway will be on July 3 from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This Sunday, a local nonprofit Equity Through Literacy will be hosting the Kids' Summertime Wellness Event at Memorial Park from 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. They'll be providing book bundles and affirmation journals to children with culturally relevant topics that promote social emotional wellbeing, fresh produce, opportunities for family yoga, and more. And then in regards to vaccinations, if you haven't, please get vaccinated. Hawthorne's making good progress. Seventy-seven percent of our residents age 65-plus have been vaccinated, while less than 59% of residents 16 years of age and above. That's all for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember David Patterson?
Forgive me, I think my internet is unstable, so the message I'm getting from Zoom.
Go ahead, boss. Go ahead.
I want to thank the community participating in this process, paying attention, letting your voices be heard. Appreciate you, and I appreciate all staff, all of the hard work you guys do, you know, from the interim city manager to, you know, those at the parks. Everybody on staff appreciates your work. Mr. Interim City Manager, could you ask the chief to provide a monthly report to the council? And some things that I'm interested in knowing on a monthly basis are crime stats, our use-of-force stats, important and relevant personnel matters, budget report, litigation rates, and calls responded to. And can we put as a discussion assignment at the next council meeting, something that includes both the City Attorney and the Chief of Police providing regular reports to the council?
I'm going to push back against that a little bit. I don't...
I don't want to make it incredibly difficult for these divisions, these agencies, I mean, as the divisions of the city to.
So this is the reason why I'm asked to put this discussion item so we can discuss this at a council meeting. There's a reason why I asked to put this as a discussion item so we can discuss this at a council meeting.
It's not definite. It's a suggestion and, right?
Yeah, I'm just interested in the three positions that we hire to be accountable on a regular basis. Okay. So that's the city manager, city attorney, and the chief of police.
And I think they are.
And that's something that. I'm not getting regular reports, so I'm not sure if you are, I'm not. So we can discuss this at the council meeting during discussion item. Or, I mean, during, yeah, discussion item.
I think that is more appropriate. He's just asking to put it on there. We'll see how it develops. We don't know, right? There might be some points that Councilmember Patterson may take that might make him reconsider that, whatever, right?
Why wouldn't one?
No, I mean, we're going to discuss it. That's all.
No, thank you.
That's it. Okay, that's it? Okay, good. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, you know, thank you for staff and the public, you know, to join us at the Zoom meeting. I wanted to say again, you know, thank you for the wonderful meeting that we have today. And it was short and sweet, so we're going to keep it that way. But first, I want to say, you know, happy belated Father's Day to all of the fathers that was there this weekend. And also the happy, you know, Juneteenth, that June 19 now is going to be a federal holiday. So I hope in the future we can add hot on, on a schedule to be a holiday. And I want to, I want also put on the discussion item on the agenda for next meeting to maybe we can come up with a Juneteenth celebration at the Holly Park every year. If it follows, you know, on a Saturday or to do some type of a mini festival to celebrate Juneteenth at the Holly Park every year, okay? I want to thank Vaughn for his leadership and also for the parts and recs to, today we did a groundbreaking ceremony to improve the Holly Park. So it's going to look beautiful in six months, where we're going to have, you know, walking path, the community gardens, new playground structure, picnic, new picnic area, and benches. So the park is going to be, is going to look beautiful. So I'm glad that thanks to the major H that was voted by LA County voters and our developmental impact fees that we're able to improve this park, you know, from Holly Park to Ramona Park to Jim Thorpe Park, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for the voters. I want to say that we did have a very good ad hoc homeless committee meeting on June 14th and with Caltrans. And Vaughn eventually will have some information for all the council members to deliberate and think about it there that we will definitely partner with Caltrans and LA County Board of Supervisors to come up with some additional service for homeless. So Vaughn will tell you more about that. I just want to say also thank you to the chief for sending us his City Council meeting safety plan. I appreciate it for him to take in consideration about our safety when we leave this meeting if there is some citizens that want to protest or be activists. So all of us are safe to go to our cars. So I appreciate for the safety plan that he submitted to us today. I just want to remember to everyone that summer is here and the heat is here. So there will be some Flex Alert, you know, outage out there. So make sure that you're in tune with the Flex Alert. And remember that you can go to Edison's website or the Clean Power Alliance because, you know, we are part of the Clean Power Alliance. So you can go to the cleanpoweralliance.org and find out more about Flex Alert and the social outage that is going to potentially happen during the summer because of the heat that we've been having. Again, I want to congratulate our chief for the Roger G. Blythe Leadership Award. So it's in recognition for his outstanding service to our community. So congratulations to the chief again. And thank you, Dr. Morgan Hawthorne School District, for giving him that award. I want to remind everyone, you know, we've been hearing a lot of fireworks booms every night. It goes all up to, you know, midnight, you know, people still shooting those fireworks. Even sometime you can hear them from distant. So be safe. Try not to, you know, buy illegal fireworks because we know 4th of July is coming. So I want to wish everybody happy 4th of July because we will not meet until after 4th of July. And also just to remind you that on July 10th, Hawthorne is going to bring back the farmer's market. And the farmer's market is going to be at the Berry and Swart parking lot on Dodie and El Segundo from 10:00 to 3:00. So we're going to try to have vendors there with fresh products and veggies and arts and crafts and some entertainment there. So join us for the return of the farmer's market on July 10th from 10:00 to 3:00. And on that note, I want to wish all of you good night and be safe and God bless.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So first, I want to mention the Governor's Grant, Small Business Grant Program. Governor Newsom recently unveiled another component of his $100 billion California Comeback Plan, making historic investments in small business relief. The plan expands the state's COVID-19 Small Business Relief Grant Program to a total of $4 billion, representing the largest such program in the entire country. That's in addition to the $6.2 billion tax cut for those businesses hit hardest by the pandemic, the largest state tax cut of its kind in history. These grants are already supporting diverse small businesses throughout California, with 88.3% of grants in Rounds 1 and 2 going to minority, people of color-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, and businesses located in low-to-modern income communities. To date, approximately 200,000 small businesses and nonprofits either have been or will be awarded grants, which includes finalized awards for 43,000 or almost 44,000 small businesses and nonprofits representing all 58 California counties. I have been advised by the Governor's Office that the funding for the grant program is tied to the budget, which is still pending. It will become clear in the next few weeks how much money will be available and how businesses can apply. I will keep the public informed because I do want our Hawthorne businesses to take advantage of these monies when they, when more monies become available. So I'll keep you informed as best I can. Today I had a groundbreaking, today I had the pleasure of attending the groundbreaking for significant improvements to Holly Park and Ramona Park for the benefit of families and children who will enjoy countless hours of enjoyment in those parks. So as Councilmember Montero already said, Holly Park and Ramona Park will receive extensive improvements, walking paths, new equipment for the children. In Ramona Park, they're going to get replacement of the basketball courts. And in both parks, they're going to get, the restrooms are going to be refurbished. And so I just want to mention in both cases, the improvements were the result of the city listening to the requests of the community. The community said what it wanted and we heard them. We had hearings to determine what the communities wanted in those parks. And we listened to the communities and these are the results. I want to give a special shout out to Arnie Shadbeer, our former city manager, who obtained the grant funding of Proposition A, I mean Measure A, for the planning. I want to thank the Planning and Public Works Department and also to our current city interim city manager Vaughn Norris, who prioritized this project because he recognized how important it was and is to the community. So I'm really looking forward to the improvements in those parks. And I definitely will be one of the people patronizing the parks. I love going to the park. I love walking in the park. So I will be there. A few words about Juneteenth Day. So I'm sure everyone knows by now, having read about it this past week, this is the anniversary of June 19th, 1865. On June, on that day, about two months after the Confederate general Robert E. Lee surrendered at Appomattox, Virginia, Gordon Granger, a Union general, arrived in Galveston, Texas to inform enslaved African-Americans of their freedom and that the Civil War had ended. General Granger's announcement put into effect the Emancipation Proclamation, which had been issued more than two and a half years earlier on January 1st, 1863 by President Lincoln. Of course, in those days, there was no internet and news traveled slowly by horseback. So these were the last slaves that learned that they had been freed. And that's why Juneteenth is celebrated. And this, this was the last group of slaves to learn they had been freed. So there's been a renewed interest in Juneteenth Day. Blacks in the United States have been celebrating it for many years, especially in Texas. And in Texas, it has been celebrated as a state holiday since 1980. And 45 states have followed suits in more recent years. So we're kind of late to the party, but it's really great news that this is going to be a national holiday. And I think it'll be a chance for everyone to have a renewed interest in the celebrations that, that black people have taken advantage of in the, for almost forever. I can remember Juneteenth celebrations since I was a child. So I know that this is, this is not a new holiday. It's just that we have not celebrated it as a country. And I think this is, it's really about time. And I also am looking forward to us celebrating it in Hawthorne next year. And I must say that Juneteenth has been celebrated in Hawthorne since probably around 2010 when Hawthorne, the Holly Park, it was the Holly Park Homeowners Association. Now it's the Holly Park Neighborhood Association. They had been having a Juneteenth pancake breakfast since probably around, maybe I want to say, I want to say since June 2010. And the interesting thing is that the last couple of years because of COVID-19, they didn't have pancake breakfast. But whatever celebrations we have, I would like them to include the Holly Park Neighborhood Association's Pancake Breakfast as part of the celebration. So anyway, happy 4th of July, everyone. That's all I have. Be sure, and when you celebrate, celebrate with safe and sane fireworks. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any callbacks at all? Okay. So I'd like to thank the community for watching us out there, the questions that were given to the City Council. The City Council is working hard for you, the residents, to do good things for the city of Hawthorne, to move along economically. And now with the reopening of the city, the state, the county, the country, just still be responsible because there's still some uncertainty with regards to COVID-19. So make sure you're vaccinated. Try to get vaccinated. I know there's people with reservations out there on getting the vaccine. But if vaccinated, still try to, you know, do what you should be doing. Do what you should have always been doing. Wash your hands after you go to the bathroom. Wash your hands before you eat. You know, don't sneeze on people. I mean, common sense, guys. That's, that's how other, like the flu and other viruses get spread. So just, just implement good hygiene and common courtesy. And I think we're all going to be good. So that's it for me. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for being here. Have a good night.
Good night, all.
Night.